Approval of prior meeting minutes, we don't have any at this time. So we'll move on to, is there any correspondence?
No.
No correspondence. Is there a student representative report?
Uh, no.
Nope.
But there was going to be a student spotlight, possibly two, but um. I think you would be fine, thank you.
I will take over the student spotlight here for the moment.
What grade are you in, Chris?
We just move around each other.
Yeah.
Uh, so I just thought I'd show you a little bit of video from the trip the drone team took to West Virginia, just so you kind of get a sense of what that's all about. So there's Nico and Eli on there. At the pit area, but just to understand what the game is, you know, the drone team, what do they do, some of the experiences the other night when you came to the innovation night, but you can see. The game works by using the down draft and the drones doing different things. There's a black curtain there you can see, so at some point in the game you have to go behind there and try to get these balls out of there. So the balls come down the track, sort of like drum soccer in a way. Uh, they have to come to the end of the track and they go, and they split out one side or the other. One side is considered blue, the other side is considered green. You can see there's green and blue circles there as well. You can see that in the moment, there's little bean bags on top of those colors there. And you have these platforms and you have to try to get those off so you can do a matching of green side. Green and green, there's a multiplier effect from there, but that's the basic part of the game. The archways you see there, the blue and the red, they're just serving as obstacles. And the kids have to fly around, there's a green circle, a yellow circle, and now the ball track. They have to fly from there, or around, you know, it's the most efficient way, so. It's game control, finesse. My drone wasn't in a very good position, I sent the ball the wrong way, so. He's gonna get catch back up to it and get it anyway, so. And then there's the landing zone, um, so you can see Nico's kind of got the eye of the landing. Uh, he has the bullseye there. This is a look at more of the bean bag kind of stuff. There's like a red box there kind of behind us. So you kind of see the drone hovering over there, it's got a little for a few seconds before it gets enough airflow to flip that bean bag off. And there's uh, there's two boxes in the middle of the field, you can try to land on those as well. So typically, it's two teams are working together. Typically, it's a split task, one goes for the bean bags, one goes for the ball. And then there's a separate part of this where it's a completely different feel, different configuration, and you get to pilot just by yourself as fast as you can for one minute. Uh, each of these obstacles has a point value, each of them. Can we get for his team there, there's a box to go through, he's gotta go, he's gotta go through the yellow hoop, through the green hoop, he comes back around again, he goes back to the, he's gotta do like a little figure eight. Uh, under the red, over the blue, back under the blue, back over the red, and through, and then we get, so he does that. His best runs were about, uh, four times that you did that, which out of about a thousand teams nationwide. I'm gonna pause it just for thirty, oh, about a thousand teams nationwide, Nico was around the top 100. This here is, the kids got a nice demonstration from NASA. This is the Dragonfly drone from NASA. They are sending, not this, this is a prototype, but the kids got a little demonstration on it and learned a little bit about it, so. Uh, the Dragonfly drone will be sent to Titan, which is one of Saturn's moons. It will be launching in 2028 and arrive there in 2034. So this is a one-third size prototype of that. The NASA engineers gave a little presentation to the kids talking about how it works. Now Titan is, uh, gravity wise, much less than Earth, atmosphere thicker than Earth. So the eventual one, that would be three times the size, would weigh about 2,000 pounds. It won't actually fly on Earth, it would be too heavy to fly on Earth, but while they figure everything out, they're using this one-third size prototype. So the kids got to see it fly around, talk a little bit about how there's a, there's plutonium onboard so for nuclear reaction to heat the, to get the electricity flowing, to charge the batteries. It can fly for about a half an hour on those batteries, and then it will, it has cameras to take pictures of Titan, it has lidar to assess the ground whenever it's safe to land. Um, so it can map the area while it's there. It will, uh, Titan's nighttime is about eight birthdays, so at night it will land and charge up overnight. And then when the sun comes back up in eight days, it can start doing its thing again. So it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't need the sun to charge, it's charging them up through a nuclear reaction, but they want the sunlight to be able to see what they're doing, right? So the kid's got a little, little demo of what that looks like here. It's got, uh, and then, this is just the overview of the whole, the whole thing. There's three fields there, and then the skills field in the back for both autonomous as well as piloting. We saw Nico doing piloting, they also had to do an autonomous run as well, where they preprogrammed their drone to, to go through those obstacles, so. Just thought I'd catch up on that, so you know what that, how that'll look like.
Pretty cool.
Very cool. Very cool. Where did we finish all total?
Uh, total, they, uh, there was 50 teams there. Uh, we were probably in the middle of the pack, really, 27, 28, so. Uh, but it's a really tight, there were like probably four or five really good teams, and then from fifth to fortieth, pretty, pretty small point dispersion. It was, it was tough to crack that, but it was good, they did well.
Julie's there.
I, I was just gonna comment, having gone to the innovation night, what fun it was to try to do that. Sophie was very patient, trying to teach me how to go through hoops and do things. So to see this actual competition is kind of cool, very cool, yeah.
What's the kids' react, students' reaction?
Oh, I mean, they, they love it, yeah. I mean, they, they, I mean, they had a lot of fun with it. You know, there's, uh, these, these kids that are staying, you know, again, that, this was just Nico and Eli, so, um, there were about 15 kids in total that took the after-school program, went to a competition in Connecticut. It was just Eli and Nico were the two that, in their group, were able to get enough points to qualify for West Virginia. But so we, we had five teams this year made up of mostly middle schoolers, but, um, yeah, no, they, I mean, they love it, you know? It's, it's a lot, it's a lot of fun for them, and the, uh, competition is, uh, is, you know, just kind of enhances the overall experience a little bit, you know? Working in teams, working under pressure.
What do you anticipate for the upcoming year?
Uh, I think it's gonna grow every year, you know? And that's what every, that's what every school that gets into this is encountering that. You know, once the word gets out, you know, so, I mean, year one, we had four kids, year two, we had 15 kids. What's gonna be year three of school over 20?
And I'd love to think, because I know that when you went, Carl, you went to that competition where, you know, some of the schools show up with three buses of kids.
Yeah.
And then there's us, and we win. But if there are ways that the school committee can help, you know, think about it, not.
I'll let you know.
The only thing we're able to do, well, together with you, is bring Sminey Pignatelli to learn. He loves, he tells people all the time about his drone experience.
Oh, good, good, good.
So now we have to get Lee Davis here to do it. Thank you.
Alrighty. Uh, is, anybody have any more questions? Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Uh, public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. Again, my name's Kevin Fish. Um, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the school committee, administration, and the union reps for continuing the contract negotiations. I know these conversations haven't been easy, and I just wanted to come back again tonight to say how glad I am to hear that they're moving forward and not being put off until the fall. As a parent, I again want to highlight how important it is that our teachers and staff feel valued and supported. They are the heart of this district and the reason our kids thrive. I truly hope an agreement is reached soon so everyone can enjoy the summer. I'd also like to briefly comment on the upcoming superintendent search. Uh, this is a pivotal moment in our district. Um, I know it's only been a couple weeks since Beth shared her news, but I hope we begin the process as soon as possible, and that it's broad, open, and inclusive, highlighting the many programs, people, and values that make this community so special. Um, I also hope the search committee includes not only members of the school, the search committee, yeah, not, um, members of the school committee, but also parents, teachers, and community members, voices that reflect the heart and diversity of our district. I'd like to offer my support in this effort. Uh, I've worked as a recruiter for large organizations like Hospital for Special Surgery, Human Rights Watch, and the New York Botanical Garden, and I understand what it takes to identify and attract exceptional leadership, and I'd be honored to part, to be part of the team. We have something truly special here, and I hope we find a leader, whether local, from the surrounding area, or willing to locate, who will honor that, build it, and help us grow and continue to attract new families, which is so critical to our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, business managers report.
Um, any thinking approval for the June 26 warrants or vendor?
I move to approve the warrants.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody have any questions? Seeing none. Are you ready to vote, Bonnie?
Yes.
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 Jim?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Arthur, yes. Um, is there any grants or gifts?
No.
And I didn't see any budget transfers either.
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Art, may I ask a question on that? Being the end of the fiscal year, what's the window that transfers, is it 60 days?
It can go all the way until they close the books, so.
That's what I mean, do you close it like 60 days out, 90 days out? Is there a window of when the books for FY '25 is closed? I just, I'm curious.
I aim to.
We're, we're working on that presently.
Yeah.
Usually it's closed by the end of August, you know, it can be, you have three years open at all times.
Oh, okay.
So, it's very common.
Oh, okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, chairman's report. Um, I have the pleasure of introducing Amy Bainbridge Jordan as Sheffield's new, soon to be new, school committee representative. She's hoping to be sworn in on this coming Monday. And she's getting a taste of school committee action tonight. So, thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
Okay, so, um, we finished school on Tuesday the 17th and got right back into it. So the entire administrative team met for three days of, um, administrative retreat, of prepping and planning for next year. I'm really happy that everybody worked incredibly hard to put together data and information and the strategy for, and action steps for the strategy for district improvement for '25-'26, and we're gonna review that again at our July date, and then hopefully we'll be working with the team to also incorporate the school committee and members of the community maybe a little bit earlier in what those goals and strategies are moving forward. I submitted my last article for the Sheffield Times edition, so that is coming out. Today, I participated in a state education research and design focus group with my Transcend colleagues from across the nation. They are doing a project with Transcend and Education Reimagine with the partnership with the Alliance for Learning Innovation. So they had done a brief on seizing the opportunity for state education research and development, findings and recommendations for actions, where they're trying to help develop an interactive playbook for state and local leaders and funders and advocates that can leverage state education, research and development, and innovative practices. They think that the, um, the communities are ripe for a time to think about how we could do education differently and how we could get that funded. So that was a very interesting conversation. Your leaders from Texas, California, Washington, I was the Massachusetts representative, and just to hear the challenges that people are facing across, across the nation was really interesting. So I do have access to that initial paper if anybody is interested in learning more about that. Um, our FY '24 audit field work was done today. The auditors have been in all week and, um, finished their field work, so they'll be going back and working on their reports, which probably we won't hear until maybe mid-August on where we stand, but it's a good sign that the field work is already completed, and they have done all their testing on site. So that's all I have to report for right now.
Thank you. Director of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development, Julie, I see you up there.
I am here. Chris, can you pop up a few slides I put together? It looks like it's a lot colder where you are than where I am. People are wearing sweatshirts.
That's because you weren't here the past three days.
Well, it was actually hotter the past three days there than it was where I am, so I was happy about that.
It's back to 60 again.
Yeah.
It'll, mm, 90 where I am right now.
Yep.
Julie, can you see that?
I can see it, thank you. So, um, last school committee meeting, I presented you data on math, and I said I was gonna give you little chunks as we went along. So today's presentation is focused strictly on early literacy data. So this is K through three students, and this is their end of the year data. If you can go to the next slide. So, early literacy screening is a regulation that the state made effective in July of '23. And the law requires that elementary schools assess students at least twice a year with an approved assessment that qualifies for disability screen. We use DIBELS 8, and we use it three times a year. We don't just do it twice a year, we do it getting middle and at. And we use this data to drive our instruction in the classroom and to help us decide what targeted instruction different students might need. Next slide. So, DIBELS 8 is made up of five different assessments, and if you want to read through the details of that, the PowerPoint will be posted along with the minutes from today's meeting. But they're all early literacy skills, so knowing letters, being able to know the sounds of the letters, being able to decode, um, you, reading nonsense words and knowing the rules of decoding, not just memorizing the words, and fluency. So, every student receives an assessment on all five different subtests for three times a year. And of course, the benchmark is different depending upon the grade you're in and the time of year. Next slide. So, all of those, um, subtests are put together to create a composite score. And so our composite score for the end of the year was amazing. So in kindergarten, we had 23% of our students that were still in the red. But in first grade, we only had 10%, and those students had come in with substantially more in the red at the beginning of the year. So our first grade teachers really knocked it out of the park, getting those kids back on grade level. Second grade, 17% below were in the red, and in third grade, 23%. Next slide. So what does this data show us? Well, I've told you guys before that if 20% or less are in the red, that is a sign that our tier one instruction and our high-quality instructional materials that we have purchased are doing their job. So, um, the HMH structured literacy that we have just finished, second year, third year?
No, second.
Second year, second year, um, is really yielding positive results. In kindergarten, where our percentage is a little bit higher, we're really gonna focus on ensuring that all of the structured literacy components are solid. And in third grade, where we see our numbers a little higher, we are looking into adding a new structured literacy component to the third grade classroom that HMH just came out with. So I think that with this continued work, I would expect that by the end of next year, you're gonna see less than 20% in red in all of those grade levels. Chris, next slide. Questions and comments? Anybody have anything?
Bonnie?
Bonnie, and what percentage of kindergartners have had no form of preschool?
I did not pull that data for tonight's meeting, but I can for you. I think it's pretty small at this point. Um, we are pretty lucky that many, many of our kindergarten students also go through our preschool program, which really helps them to be ready when they enter kindergarten. But I can definitely look into that and let you know.
Thank you.
That would be an interesting data point.
Okay, anybody have any more questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, have a great day.
Yep.
You too.
Is there a director of student services report tonight?
So she was on, but where she is, her internet was not excellent. So she said, if I return, I will return. Um, she was really just going to talk about the fact that our summer school program starts, um, on Monday, so, um, we'll, we'll wait and see if she reenages.
Okay.
I don't want to steal her fun.
Alrighty. New business, early ca, yeah, early college presentation.
Right, so Lindy is, Marcella is here to join us, and she's coming to the front.
Hello, my name is Lindy Marcell. I'm the College and Career Pathways Coordinator, so I'm the Early College Program Coordinator. I help with internships and also Innovation Career Pathways Program here at Southern Berkshire Regional School District. And for those of you who don't know, proudly, I'm an alum, class of 2005, which is now 20 years ago. So, here to give an update. Next slide, please. So, as we wrap up the 2024-2025 school year, we have reached an exciting milestone. 100% of our graduates graduated, left Mount Everett with college credit. Um, last year, 100% of our, of our graduates experienced college classes, but this year, they're all leaving with three or more credits. An average of 12 credits per student. To put that in context, full-time college students take about 15 credits per semester. So our students are leaving with, with the, you know, almost a semester's worth of credits. In total, our juniors and seniors earned over 400 college credits this year alone. That's a direct savings of time and money for students and families, and just as importantly, it reflects high-quality instruction happening here. Um, we also now have a total of 10 faculty that are certified to teach early college courses. That is the Simon's Rock Instructor Certification Program, and we're really proud of them. So, we, we also had one instructor reach their final certification, so it's kind of a two-step process. Uh, okay. Okay, so as a reminder, we just finished year three of a three-year implementation period. So our first phase of implementation is officially done. Student feedback is overwhelmingly positive. Even students who do not like their college classes, or some of their non-college classes, still feel, um, that it's something they recommend for other students and they're proud of. Um, we're, right now, you can see in the count of unique students, we're kind of hitting the upper limit for next year's projections. So that's because we're, we've reached all students. So we're looking for different ways of growing and expanding the program, right? So, um, we are continuing to offer new courses and looking for ways that potentially in the future 10th graders would, um, would begin to take college credit programming, but we're not quite, we're not quite there yet. Next slide, please. So, program to date, as a, another reminder, we were the first public full-impact school to be designated in the state. They, we are one of four designated wall-to-wall programs. That means it's, it's, um, school-wide, and we're actually one of only two districts that is district-wide, right? Because we only have one high school in our district. That is a total of 146 unique students experiencing one or more college credit courses and over 1,000 cumulative college credits, so again, that's, those are significant numbers. Next slide, yeah. So, the district has received multiple rounds of funding from Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, you guys probably know what DESI means, um, to support early college planning, implementation, targeted student services. These funds are drawn from a dedicated early college line item in the state budget, supported, formerly it was partly drawn from ESTR funds, and some of the funding is also pulled from the fair share amendment that millionaires tax. As our higher ed partner, Bard College at Simon's Rock, received the standard $180 per credit reimbursement provided to all early college designated programs, so the higher ed institution, that, that payment goes directly to them. In addition, Simon's Rock also benefited from shared funding through DESI grants, including the early college planning, implementation, support, and capacity building grants. So what we're seeing here is over the past three to four years, this has amounted, amounted to significant investment, not only in launching, but in sustaining what I refer to as cross-functional supports. So, next slide, please. What I mean by that is, our early college work contributes directly to the district's broader goals. Career readiness, contextualized learning, and expanded opportunity. So whether students are college-bound, trade-bound, or not sure, or exploring other pathways, we provide authentic college courses in, in a lot of ways, and one of those is in the context of scheduling. So a semester-long college course is equivalent to a full-year high school course. So college courses allow more time in student schedules to participate in work-based learning experiences like internships and apprenticeships. Our early college model reinforces career and technical education, trades exposure, hand-on, hands-on, project-based learning. So that's, that's what I mean by, by multifunctional or cross-functional supports. And I really, I feel like it might be worth repeating that the students are not being pushed into college if it's not a good fit for them, but they're being shown that they're college-capable, and I think that's why it's important to have all students included in this. The programming is designed to be beneficial for everybody. Um, one example is, so we have additional advisory services, I provide some of these, right? So I work with students on their post-secondary plans. That might be where your college credits transfer, and how to transfer your credits. But currently working with a student who plans on being an electrician, so that means working with them on understanding licensure requirements. We are looking into requirements for apprenticeship hours, how to pass your test for, for, you know, different types of trades. So there's, um, it's not as if these services are only serving a subset of our student population. Okay, next slide. This was just for fun. This was our first full class of early college students taken a couple years ago. This was our first full class of early college students taken a couple of years ago, and my first year here as an employee of the district. Okay. Next steps. So we're going to continue working with Simons Rock and the Early College Research Institute to build and grow programming. We've got some summer workshops in the works, and then we're looking at more robust evaluation structures. Essentially, we're really ahead of where the state guidelines end, so we're kind of looking to measure ourselves in new ways. We're continuing to expand our existing programming, we have new classes being offered. Next year, we have new faculty training options, and we are figuring out ways to support increased credit attainment. And, the biggest news, we are about to begin the process of writing an application to DESI to expand our higher education partnerships to include UMass. The next step builds on successful partnership with Bard and ensures that even as their campus transitions to Annandale, that our early college momentum is only growing. So many of the state's designated early college programs have multiple college partners already, so this is something that's encouraged by Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Department of Higher Ed and the Early College Joint Committee. We have, so having multiple college partnerships, I think, broadens access to varied programs, different types of credit transfer options and supports, so more diverse options for students. UMass is also a Massachusetts-based degree granting institution, which means Southern Berkshire will remain eligible for Massachusetts-specific grant funding support. It's also a different type of higher ed institution, right? It's a state school, it's a big university, so it's kind of complementary to the offerings of our current college partner, which is more small liberal arts. So, and then looking way beyond that, we have plans to work with the five college consortium as well, so students get access to even broader network of opportunities. So, yeah, I wanted to say, this has been quite a process. Mount Everett adopting rigorous early college programming district-wide is huge, and it would not have been possible without the support of the school committee, so thank you. And so from my perspective, we're in a really strong spot. We now, when I approached UMass to see if they would be interested in talking about a partnership, they were like, oh, we already know about you, we heard about you, talked, we were at an event last week for something called One Goal, and everyone was already talking about your district, and this is happening out in Boston, so I think that's something to be really proud of. They had already heard about us, our reputation for strong early college has preceded us in a really good way. So, thank you, and does anyone have questions? Yes?
Lindy, two questions come to mind. Earning, as a, earning college credits as a student at Mount Everett does not necessarily mean that the college or university you attend will honor those credits, correct?
It's true, we have a very high transfer success rate. That, it's really specific on the student's major, the program they choose, they select to opt into, right? And so we really encourage them, starting in ninth and 10th grade, to figure out what their interests and passions are, so that they opt into classes in their high school experience that are more likely to translate into their post-secondary.
So, a follow-up to that.
Yeah.
You said, it's a two-part question.
Yeah.
You said 100% of the graduating class this year earned at least one college credit.
At least three, yeah, so because most classes are multiple credits, yep.
Right, so they earned at least three, but not 100% of the students, or I could be wrong about this, but I assume that not 100% of the students are going to college.
100% of the students are not enrolled in college right now, that's correct.
Okay, so that percentage, those students who are not going to college, and I'm not going to characterize their college credits earned here as useless, of course, they probably can be very useful, but they're not going to be, go towards their college education, that they are not going to reduce the credits required if they go to, they're not, those people who are going into business, going into the military, and they may eventually go to college, but...
Right, if they do eventually go to college, those credits will not expire.
Okay, and so the second part of the question is, you mentioned that there is a high transference rate.
Right.
But you didn't show us those statistics, do you have them?
Those are tough. We, so those are, I can, I can put something together for you, absolutely. I work with, I work with almost every college to understand how credits will transfer on behalf of every one of our students who's enrolled in a college when they're, when they're leaving Mount Everett. In some, in some cases, they're transferring to meet minimum credit requirements, right? So they might have really specific classes required for their major that we just wouldn't offer because they wouldn't be applicable for the majority of our students, but I have yet to, I have yet to get no for an answer. So in speaking with every single college that our students have enrolled in, every single one of their registrar's offices has confirmed that they would be willing to accept Mount Everett early college credits. So I'm, I haven't contacted every college in the world, but I contact the colleges that our students say they're attending.
And I don't know the answer to this question, I mean, I'm asking your opinion on this. Would it be fair to say, this is going to be, this is my guess, but I don't, this isn't a trick question. My guess is that some schools will be more reluctant than others to grant credit. Let's take a school, let's take a first-tier school, Duke University, Stanford, University of Michigan, schools like that. Is your understanding that it may be more difficult to get those to accept?
So my understanding...
Our students' credits?
Yeah, my understanding is, at the, at the current levels, no. I think, I actually contacted University of Michigan out of curiosity because I happened to live in Ann Arbor formerly, so I reached out to University of Michigan. But it might get tricky around the point of 30 credits or more. So when you're coming in with multiple years of college credits, hoping that you can reach a junior, junior status in college, I'm expecting a bit of pushback. That being said, higher ed in the state of Massachusetts is doing their best to keep up with early college, and they know that if they don't accept these credits, they're going to not be as competitive when it comes to students considering them as an option. So I feel really good about Massachusetts-based schools, I feel good about current, you know, currently students saving some time and some money across the country. But we, yeah, we will see what happens with the early college movement that is happening in other states as well, and how that translates to colleges, yeah, that's, it is absolutely a concern, but it's something that we're, I have, I have hope that it will be, it will be transferable for our students when they need it, yeah.
Thank you for, thank you for doing this work.
Oh, thank you, I love doing this work.
And thank you for your responsiveness to my questions, I appreciate it.
Nancy?
Lindy, what are you finding, if you can understand my voice, what are you finding is the kids' reactions to experiencing college coursework, college-driven coursework for those kids who don't really want to go to college?
So, it's definitely a range, let me tell you, asking them, once it's completed, is when I think it matters the most. If you, if you ask them before, they say, I don't want to do it, it sounds really difficult, and then once it's done, they say, everybody should do this, and I'm really proud of myself for doing it. I like knowing what I'm capable of, and for a lot of, a lot of folks who have not gone to college but had something in their lives, like an exam they had to pass, or a committee they wanted to participate in, they, they kind of missed out on some of that skill-building that I think early college supplements in addition to the high school experience. So I think it's highly applicable skill-building for all of our students, and the non-college-bound students recognize that, they're able to articulate that.
Follow-up, a follow-up question with that then is, does that in some ways also be potential lifelong or potentially long, long-term, if, learning interest as well, is that one of the things you guys are following?
That's a, that's a great question, I mean, we're only at year three, so, but I, I would certainly hope so, yes. I think there are a lot of light bulbs going off for students, especially younger students, who might sit in on a college class for the first time when they're in ninth or 10th grade, and they're like, oh, it actually wasn't that hard, it was just like 13th grade, and I was like, well, yeah, that's exactly what college is, it's like 13th grade, it's not, it's not impossible for you to do. So, yes, Nancy, I would like to think it inspires lifelong learning.
So that's something you guys would be interested to track, like especially for students who are going to BCC just for a single class, or any?
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Bonnie?
Couple of questions, first, in terms of our instructors who have the certification now, is there anything that exists that then transfers it to any future partnership we have?
So, we don't have a process to transfer, but we also know the existing process is still, is still in place. In fact, Bard and the Simons Rock Early College Research Institute wants to essentially help other schools get trained using the same model. So they are, they're really invested in providing these types of resources, they have, I guess I'll, I'll say, the early college model in Massachusetts, the Department of Higher Ed and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education formed the Early College Joint Committee, they used Bard Early College High Schools and Simons Rock as their model of early college. So in partnering with them, we've established what the state considers to be best practices, so we anticipate them continuing for the long term to support our certified instructors, and sharing that model out with other districts who I think would be in a position to learn from what we've done here.
So, would I be correct then in saying that if we would establish partnership with Westfield State, our early college certified teachers would, you would work to make sure that their certificate, whatever it is, enabled them to get, to offer credits that would be accepted there?
I hate to do this to you Bonnie, but I cannot ans, I don't know yet, I, like, that is a great idea, worth considering, but I'm not sure exactly what that might look like. I think there's a lot of open-mindedness right now with, with how this model could translate into other partnerships.
All right, so that's, goes to part two of my three, four question.
Okay.
What are you telling students now about the upcoming year?
So, the students pretty much think of it as status quo. The planning process with UMass is, is going to look like, you know, field trips or experiences next year, but it's not going to mean college credit course-taking. We would need to go through the lengthy application process and the approval process, which doesn't happen for almost a full year, in order for that to happen, the college credit course-taking to happen with UMass. So next year, we have all the same classes we've been running, plus a few new ones, we rotate some out each year with, with Simons Rock. So we are, the students signed up for their courses as usual this past spring, and they noticed a few new classes in the program of studies. That's, that's pretty much what their, their experience is, nothing changed, which I think is, I think is good.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah.
And my third part is really a compliment, I want, second, what Carl said, you've really advocated for our students, I mean, to make sure their college credit is worthwhile and the amount of time you spend with admissions officers that are, it's really appreciated. And the last thing is, I was speaking to a student who hated the first course he took.
Yeah.
Hated. And when he graduated a year ago, it was like, this is great, I'm going, I forgot the number of credits he was doing, I loved the experience, we talked to each other differently in class when we're in our college course, so you're turning on.
Yeah, we have conversations a lot with students about how, you know, being uncomfortable or something being temporarily unpleasant, oftentimes you look back on those experiences and you're really glad you did those things. So I do not, I do not expect students to love every second of every class, especially when they're taking academic risk, we're really encouraging academic risk-taking with this model, and so we're glad they're doing it here in a safe place as opposed to when they're racking up lots of college debt and get themselves into a rough spot. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all. Oh, yes.
Yeah, a couple of questions. You've mentioned UMass.
Yes.
UMass Amherst? You mentioned the five colleges, so that's, which campus are we connected to?
I'm currently working with someone at UMass that is actually in a position to speak on behalf of all of the UMass schools, so they're, I'm working with someone in the president's office.
Okay.
But yes, our partnership would, would be with UMass Amherst first. UMass Amherst does not currently have a designated program, other UMass schools, so there's UMass Dartmouth, UMass, Boston, UMass Lowell, and so we, we would be one of their first. They do have what they consider to be the collegiate academy, so that was their version of early college before the state came in with their criteria around early college, so it's a little bit complicated, the term early college gets thrown around sometimes and it means different things to different people. And then the five college consortium is the network of colleges in the five college area.
In Amherst.
Yeah, so the idea would be to then link into that system so that our students could take advantage of, of, you know, just diversity of offerings.
That's great. So of the projected 62 students, I know you mentioned earlier ninth and 10th graders are eligible to be in that, how, how do you decide, like, I would expect juniors and seniors to be encouraged, but is, are we looking at like the higher academic students in ninth or 10th grade?
That's a good point of clarification.
First, how, what's the differentiation for the younger students?
So, this is, this is important details for the state. 100% of our ninth through 12th graders are pre-enrolled. They're automatically enrolled, and this is formally, like, they're coded differently when we submit our information to the state. Currently, it's mostly 11th and 12th graders who feel ready for college credit coursework. We've had some exceptions to that, and they've, actually, all the, all the younger students have found success in their college credit courses as well. But right now, we're really set up for preparatory programming in ninth and 10th grade, we actually go down into the middle school, and then by the time you're, you're, at the end of your 10th grade year, you do some exercises to figure out what level of college credit course-taking might be right for you, explore your interests in a little bit of a different way, and then 11th grade is when, is when a lot of our students would expect college credit coursework to begin, and then definitely in 12th grade.
Nice, nice.
Yep.
I really love your phrase of the students that perhaps are not going to college finding themselves as college-capable.
Yes, yeah.
I loved it when I was advising at BCC and a student that had been out of school for five to 10 years would come in, and I said, yeah, you're not 18 anymore, you're 28, you're going to get straight A's, and they almost always did, but I mean, now it's even setting them up for success even easier than how I had to talk about that then.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of data behind that.
I'm really excited about that, I love that phrase.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Lindy.
Thank you.
You see Sandy's there?
I don't see her.
Oh, okay.
Good evening Sandy, can you hear us?
I can, good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good.
We're ready.
Sorry, I have really bad internet right now, I'm going to turn my camera on. Good evening, everybody, I just wanted to, my report is very, very brief, but our summer program is starting next week on Tuesday, and we have a variety of things that are happening here this summer, which I told you about at the last meeting, and was in my last report, but we're looking forward to welcoming the students and the staff in next week for a whole variety of programs. a whole variety of programs that we're doing. Kids are going to camp, kids are participating in various sports camps, arts camps, and then, of course, our academic and extended school year camp. So, we're really looking forward to having them there. And that's really all I have tonight.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you so much.
Okay, unfinished business.
Uh, inter.
Oh, right. Interim superintendent suits. Liz, sorry, jumping the gun. Are you there, Liz?
Hey, I'm not sure who it is. I'm coming. Sorry, I just jumped up to get a banana for the three-year-old who's in my room watching television. Hi, everyone. That was a nice meeting, good reports.
We tried.
Did Art tell you why I'm here? I'm sure he did, right?
Thank you for being here.
Of course. So, this seems to be the season of quick turnarounds in hiring interim superintendents. We've done three already to start for the beginning of July, so we're, we're practicing, we're ready to roll. I did think tonight it was coming to a policy meeting, so I got myself all ramped up for policy and then realized after I talked to Art, it was interim superintendent. But you know what? It's all good. I'm gonna, there are a few things we need to talk about. Beth, I understand, is leaving at the end of August. You have a little more time than some of the, two of the other districts I just worked with, who had three weeks and two weeks respectively. The first thing, if you hear screaming, it's a three-year-old. The first thing we want to do is determine the qualifications that you want, we have to post the position. We want to determine the qualifications, the key characteristics, and a timeline that you're considering. And I would say, if we can, to include sort of an updated community profile. Now, the last brochure we have available at MASCE was from 2021, but I don't think it will be difficult to just update the community profile as much as needed at all. I'd like to, is it okay if we just jump right in and look at the details that you posted in 2012 and talk about where to go from there? Okay, good.
2016, 20, 2016?
Mm-hmm.
2016.
So, right?
I think that I can share my search. There we go.
Do you have 2016?
That's, that's the...
I do not have the 2016 brochure. I, I was told they could not find anything before 2012 in the office. Did Patty Carrera do the 2016 search?
No.
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 No. So, for whatever reason, we don't have that. But I don't think we're far away from this. If you'll give me a moment. We'll start with the qualifications, if you don't mind. I think the areas that I highlighted are generally pretty routine. The only thing you might want to think about is whether you're looking, well, for an interim, but you might want to think about whether you're looking for 10 to 15 years in education. I would say you likely are, including three in central office. We might even say including five in central office.
Excuse me, Liz, can you share?
Because... Oh, am I not sharing?
No.
No.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I thought I was sharing. Hold on, hold on, I'll try again. I'm gonna try again. Oh, I would, it would help if I shared that little blue button down at the bottom, though. Where I need to be. Wrong. Okay, here we go. So, this was the 2012 brochure. The highlights in green, what you had said in the 2012 brochure was licensed or eligible for licensure. I think for an interim, you don't want even entertain-eligible for licensure. You're either licensed as a superintendent in Massachusetts or you're not. This is pre-standard master's degree required, advanced degree preferred, minimum of 10 to 15 years in education, including, this says, three years in central office and/or other administrative experience. I might suggest adding after that, I might suggest tailoring that to say, including five years in central office and at least five years' teaching experience. Semi-colon, experienced superintendent required. Now, I say this because you need an experienced superintendent to step into a regional district to keep all the balls in the air, right, while you conduct a full search. We have, this year, for the first time ever, experienced DESI's critical shortage waiver team, looking more closely at the critical shortage waivers. So, the wording of your qualifications is important. And we are now familiar with, this week, I think we just, just had a communication back and forth today, and we're expecting the final approvals on those two districts by the end of the week. So, we've had a little experience this year. It's the first time ever there's been any, any work done at all with the, at DESI, with the critical shortage waiver people. But, you know, DESI, they, they like to be very clear on what they want and when they want it, so I'm not too worried about that. I think that if our retired superintendent were to apply and be appointed. What I've seen in the past two searches, in the eastern part of Western Massachusetts, is, is a surprisingly pretty decent batch of people looking to become interims for various reasons. Some are not retired and some certainly are. I would think that you want some, knowing that Beth has been a real driver in this area, you'd want somebody with successful school budget development experience, strong leadership communications and public relations skills, since I see a lot of that coming out of Southern Berkshire on a regular basis anyway. The next thing we're gonna need to, I'm gonna skip over the timeline because this is right up here on my page. This is the previous community profile that you posted, again, back in 2012. It may need some modernizing, but I don't think the law of it will change. Excuse me, here you go, sweetheart. You're welcome. Our timeline is certainly better than the last two interim searches that I worked on, but I would hope if we could come to some general agreements here tonight, that the committee would identify someone, perhaps the chair, to work on updating this community profile, probably along with that, so we can add it to the notice of vacancy. I want you to know that, not yet, but coming up, in October of 2025, anything you post is going to have to have a salary range. We don't have to put that on for the interim because the law is not in effect yet. And as I looked at the key responsibilities and criteria you posted in 2012, I highlighted in green some things that I would think you'd be interested in, in your interim superintendent, because you are not looking for anyone necessarily to come in and make changes, but rather to keep the good work that's already happening, moving forward, while you do that full search and find your next permanent superintendent. So, I'm just gonna give you a minute to look those over. Can everybody see that well enough? Now, I want to show you something else, which is, we had put this together just and sent it to Art, I think, late last week, could have been early this week. These are kind of the steps we need to take. We're gonna create the initial job posting. It won't be the big fancy brightly colored brochure that you'll end up with when you post for the permanent superintendent. You know, we love adding pictures of kids doing the magic that they do in schools, just some, some really colorful and pertinent graphics. We want a basic one-pager. We want to get it posted on the MASCE site and the Mass Superintendent's site. Again, I need you all to identify the key characteristics and qualifications of your ideal candidate. Possibly allow the chair to update the community profile. And we could get that posted on both sites as soon as that job description or, or notice of vacancy is complete. Now, in terms of how you're gonna handle the initial steps of this search, you, you essentially have the month of July, maybe into early August, but I would think you'd want to get the bulk of the work done in July. So, you need to decide if you're gonna have the full committee do the initial search and interviews, and then have the full committee interview after the subcommittee selects finalists. I think that adds time, but it could be handled in Southern Berkshire based on the experience that I'm having with policy. You certainly do move things along, which actually is incredibly nice to work with a committee like that. But I want to point out that, I want to point out that all the work that is done by either the full committee or a subcommittee has to be done in open session. The other possibility there is whether you might allow the chair to do the initial paper screen and forward candidates that he believes, I guess in consultation with myself and other members of MASCE, if that's desire, just to forward the finalist candidates onto the school committee for full public interviews. So, there's two options there, right? Having a subcommittee and then having them, that could be done in executive session if it's just a subcommittee. I got that covered because I think I said the wrong thing there while I saw my little red-headed three-year-old coming out of my room. Why, guys? If you do a sub-form of the committee for a screening, it can be done in executive session as long as those finalist candidates come out and are interviewed in public session. So, I hope I just clarified that. Subcommittee can do it in executive session. Or you could authorize the chair to do that initial paper screen. I wouldn't expect we'd have 15 or 20 applicants, but I think anywhere between seven and 10 is realistic. I think there are some working superintendents out there who are looking for a change of venue. And I think there are some very qualified retired superintendents who are, who are also looking to step in and perform as interims as long as they can get that critical shortage waiver. The third decision is whether you interview all of the applicants. Any questions on that particular section, how you might like to handle it, or you want to talk that through?
Yeah. Liz, on your reference to executive session, and you used the word, you may do it in executive session. We're not, we're not required to, or are we?
No, no.
That's what I thought, but...
You're not required to. Now, we would ask you to do that in a full search where you would have a larger array, let's say, of candidates with different backgrounds and experience. People who are looking to become permanent superintendents have different, a different stake in the game, right? Nobody wants to be the person who publicly isn't interviewed, you know? And so, in a full search for your permanent superintendent, we certainly would recommend that initial search process by a committee, a search committee that represents a broader group of stakeholders. They would then select finalists to move forward to the full committee. Does that make sense, Carl?
Yes, thank you.
Or because of the timeline that you're working with, it would be up to you if you want to authorize the chair or someone else to sort of do that initial paper screen and forward candidates to the committee for interviews. Or option, behind door number three is interviewing everybody, which one of the committees at Cranefield actually did that. They just simply interviewed all seven of their candidates who were all qualified. And, you know, it took them an entire Saturday to do that, so that might not be an option you want to look at. Can we briefly talk about the timeline now? Am I moving too fast? Okay. Timeline. When I did this, I was optimistic that we, there was a possibility we could get this posted by the 30th, but I'm thinking now it might be more towards the middle of the week. Next week, we would think about a last date for applications, which would be around the end of the month of July. We would plan interviews the week after that posting closes, or very quickly after that posting closes. This would be listed right on the notice of vacancy, so candidates who apply are aware of the interview dates. If you were to do that paper screen, it would happen later than, usually it's the day after the, the posting closes. And then, you could have an appointment certainly by the end of, of July. You may need to quick tweak these dates just a little bit. And the job, the notice of vacancy would also include an anticipated start date. Now, once you have someone in place and you're contracted with them for the year, the committee can think about how it wants to move forward with its, its full search. You're gonna get proposals from multiple superintendent searchers, how you're gonna go through that process, deciding on the search committee, how people will apply for that, getting that search committee up and running oriented, and certainly creating a more flashy and colorful brochure, and a few other things that would need to be done along the way. But I, we're here to talk about the interim. But we're here to talk about the interim. So I'll just stop there on that. Does anybody want to ask any questions on this particular portion, creating the notice of vacancy?
Nope, I think we're good. Keep going.
Okay, well, so this is where I would come. This is what we need to do, in its entirety, essentially. And we need to make some decisions about when you're gonna make decisions, about your qualifications. The final timeline, which I can certainly tweak pretty easily and get that back to whomever's gonna make that decision. And the community profile. It's always good to include, on any job vacancy notice, a bit about your community and your district.
I would think one thing we would certainly add would be about the early college. Since, I mean, it's...
For the leaders.
Yeah.
You transcend and all of that.
Transcend and a lot of that, yeah. We would need to update with that.
Yeah. That's really outdated, so.
Does anybody here have that 2016 profile? Yeah? Okay. Well, that would help, but it's still probably outdated though with this other stuff.
Somebody would need to update that.
Oh, it looks like. Art, you might not be able to see it. Nancy raised her hand. There's a little box there.
Nancy, you have a question?
It's more to say, I think that the, I may be wrong about this, but looking at the profile of the community profile, it's good bones. It just needs to be added to with what it has achieved over the last eight years and also that it's something that we want to see continue to grow. So I think that has, you know, maybe 2012, 2013, but it's good bones. It is.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, Art, do you want to have some discussion with your committee about, I guess, first of all, the qualifications?
Yeah.
See if you could settle on that?
I think we're gonna have to sit down and discuss the whole thing, Liz, and...
Oh, okay.
Well, I'll have to get back to you.
Sure. So, next week is the Fourth of July.
Yep.
Just letting you all know. You might want to talk about having a meeting next week so you can get this up. And it's out there. You're gonna want at least three weeks because you do have the Fourth of July holiday coming up. And I think a lot of people take vacation. You could consider leaving it up a little bit longer because you have the month of August. But you would not want to go, I would think, any longer than the last week in July having this posted so that you could get interviews done very early in August. Now, I thought we were doing policy tonight. This would be a little bit fancier than it is. But what I can do, Art, is send this off to you and you can share it with the committee as you see fit. I'll update that timeline on the other document that I talked about here that looks a little more with a couple of possibilities. And I'll resend that to you. And at least in terms of getting your notice of vacancy out, we're happy to help any way that we can. And we would like to get it posted on those two websites, which is where people look for positions regardless of the time of year. So, why don't I do that? And I'll get it back to you by tomorrow morning, maybe tonight. And you can let me know what you would like to do from there. Fair enough? Unless there's any other questions.
Julie has a question.
Yeah, I have one. Is the information that you just shared, Liz, of the support from MASC, is that a part of our membership? Or is what you described, is there additional support there? Because we were talking earlier that we could go fully in with you, maybe on a full search or not, or what. So does this, what you described, come with the membership benefit we have?
I'm sorry I didn't mention that. Thank you for asking, Julie. This will come to you as members of the committee. You've got a very quick turnaround time. There's a lot of this that we'll help you with. Some of it you may wish to do yourselves, like calling the successful candidates and the not successful candidates. I think I'm here for you all and I will help in any way I can with this. And it is part of your membership, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure of that. Great.
Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, thank you.
The one thing that have to be done at the district level though, and I know Beth knows this, if you do hire a retired superintendent, somebody at the district level who has access to the DASC portal would have to complete the critical waiver and deal with the person from TESI in terms of any additional information that they're looking for. I will tell you in the three searches that we've had it come up this year, again, for the very first time, once they, it was a little unnerving to have it pushed back and asked for information. But once they got the information they wanted, the process seemed to be pretty smooth after that.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll be in touch.
Okay.
Okay, unfinished business? I don't think we have any. Subcommittee reports, finance committee. Probably before we should meet and go over the audit when we get that. That's further.
You actually have an audit subcommittee too, so.
Okay.
But whatever, that's fine.
All right. So we'll figure that out. Community relations, Nancy?
Nope.
Okay, policy, Carl?
We're moving along as Liz just mentioned. She thought tonight was a policy subcommittee. It wasn't, obviously. But we're moving along, we're making good progress. No real change from our last school committee. My reporter had our last school committee.
Okay, thank you. Personnel negotiations, Bonnie? You have anything else you want to say?
Bonnie?
I heard. The, I have to say it for the public. So this is now public even though you've heard it in executive session. The SBREA and the district have agreed to negotiate during the summer. There were some misconceptions there. And it was clear that both sides want to do what can be done to reach a negotiated settlement. And we have scheduled July 22nd for our next meeting. Negotiations, we hope that leads to a final agreement. Should it not lead to a final agreement, we will instruct our attorney to file on the 23rd for mediation. That does not mean that we would not continue to negotiate. You can withdraw mediation at any point that you reach a final agreement. The objective is, it takes so long to get mediation and everybody operates under the old contract. Unless unity, we have a separate vote. But at this point, we're hoping that we do not have to file for mediation, that we will have a final agreement on the 22nd. In light of that, we are asking as the Personnel and Negotiations Subcommittee for a statement of everything that has been resolved, where we have tentative agreements that should facilitate our moving ahead on what are still open issues. And then asking that the open issues be stated along with the perspective of both sides so we know what is left open to negotiation. As there are, and we're asking for that by July 15th. The objective is, again, to make it as clear as possible what it is we have to do on the 22nd in order to reach a resolution. Additionally, we have, we had determined in the, our meeting that we would ask that the selection of an interim and a selection of a superintendent not be kept under the purview at this point of Personnel and Negotiations and transferred to an ad hoc committee and that the ad hoc committee be appointed by the chair of the committee. We were not aware that the decisions, I'm gonna say this is nice, that the decisions made to bring in, and though, I have never had a bad experience with Liz Lefon, so I'm really pleased to see that. My issue, and based on some of the questions, is that we were not aware of what had been done without the approval of the full school committee. And the agreement of the subcommittee is, again, that this most important activity, which is the selection of a superintendent, be brought to this new ad hoc committee. Additionally, I made it public during our meeting that we've heard a number of issues from the community regarding how the subject of negotiations has been treated in the newspapers. And I contacted both The Edge and The Eagle. The Edge, and I see The Edge is there, had then interviewed me regarding the questions of negotiations. We didn't feel that the reporter was misreporting, but was only reporting what was coming from the SBREA where we had and had published and put on our website definitive information that refuted what was made as a statement. So we just want it out there so that the public can see there is additional information that is associated with this negotiation because it's important that the public know it's not a one-sided. And I apologize, I still can't fix this phone tomorrow, I have an appointment. So that is the total. We are looking forward by, on July 22nd, to be able to fly a drone across the district with the settlement having been reached. So that's it.
Thank you. Kim?
I have no comment.
Carl?
In, this is on reviewing executive minutes. And in view of the several other pressing issues before the school committee at this time and this being a relatively low priority matter, I'm not going to have, to ask for a executive review subcommittee meeting until after we have, or we are at least well on our way to having an interim superintendent. So we're on hold on that for a bit. Not forever, but for maybe a couple of months.
Okay, future agenda items?
I'm looking for guidance on that regional school agreement subcommittee that I'm supposed to be chairing. I'm sort of feeling the same as Carl. There are so many other pressing issues that do we not, we want to wait till fall to try to put that together? Or do we wish to have a meeting over the summer to do some initial review?
Bonnie?
I would suggest that, remember, it's five towns that guide us in terms of issues. So I'd be happy to speak to you, but I really think the first thing, given what we heard and wasn't acted on, is that you might want, I agree, wait until things are settled, contract, superintendent. But plan, I would say, plan on making that outreach to the five towns because we know we've heard from at least two, it might be a third of the towns who say, well, I have an issue with this particular thing in the regional agreement.
Okay, I wasn't sure if the people on the committee had concerns from the school committee perspective to identify first. So I was thinking of that meeting first and then inviting towns in. That's why I'm looking for that guidance of how you would like to handle that.
The possibility is, I think maybe the people on the committee may not be fully familiar with the regional agreement or even how it evolved.
Okay.
To the point, it is, see, I might want to have, hold an informational meeting first and then lay out your plans so you're ready to go.
Okay.
Yeah, because I found that first time we met, we really, except for, I think it was, I think Dennis was the only one who knew all 50-plus years of evolution of the regional agreement.
Okay.
So we all had to learn.
Okay. Well, but still, like with what Carl said, I don't think it's something I'm gonna worry about right now. But it's on my mind, you know, as a responsibility, but, okay.
Okay.
Well, I have a suggestion. I think in view of what Liz said, in view of our conversation, if we're going to do what we talked about doing in executive session, I don't think there's a need for an executive session to do it. We're doing, we would be doing nothing that, if there's any reason that the public can't be aware of. If we set up a committee, an ad hoc committee, an ad hoc subcommittee on this superintendent issue, I don't think we need to have executive session. But I yield to your judgment on that as the chair.
I'm not really sure either, so.
Pardon me?
I'm not sure 100% whether we do or not, so.
I think the question, I think the question that one has to ask in this situation is, are we doing anything that should be kept from the public? And I don't think that we are. I think we're establishing a committee. We're not revealing any information. We don't have any information to reveal other than what Liz just went through and she did that in a public meeting. But that's just my view. And people can, reasonable people can disagree with me. Well, they're not so reasonable if they disagree with me, but.
You want to propose a motion to not go into, so.
No, we don't have to go into executive session.
You tried to propose a motion to not go into, into executive session.
We don't have to do that, no.
Don't attempt that, okay.
But do we need to take the vote to establish the ad hoc search committee in public session? So that we, Art could even appoint and we can have a meeting next week? Or how, I mean?
The motion was just forming a committee.
Right.
Not a search.
Not a search, it's not, it was designated a search committee.
No, 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 but it's the ad hoc committee, sure.
Yes. Unless I got that wrong.
I mean, where does the committee stand with, you know, are you deciding that you want to use MASC? I think some of those things, you might want to discuss as a committee and then come back out. But that's up to you. I don't know what kind of.
So does that mean we, yeah, would we post a, a full meeting for next week?
No, I wouldn't say go into executive session.
No.
Talk it out.
I, I would just suggest one thing, to change the motion to go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining. That's not what we're discussing.
Yeah, that's right.
And I don't know the specific citation Massachusetts General Law to give us the right section.
Well, then hash it out in public, but we can't help but go quickly.
I mean, basically, it was just, it's just a motion, whether we assess, or guidance from MASC.
I think you have to make this meeting about who you're having on it and working on it. We have time for this.
Yep.
Who'd be, and just didn't be part of it, have people, it's a good choice.
I didn't hear Nancy.
It's so much, it's like, I would like, yeah, I would like to be part, it's the search, I mean, part of the ad hoc thing. See what I can do to help you guys, help the, to get the, at least, you should hold my.
You gotta, you gotta vote to form one first.
Yep. Right.
I'm sorry, I, I moved to form an ad hoc, into, you know, and, uh, work with the MSCA to create a duty, so I would ask, yeah. Hi Bonnie?
Do you have, to see if Liz can quickly get somebody to give us the right part of Massachusetts General Law.
On what?
Since she's right there. The topic we want to discuss in executive session.
Yes, girl. Liz can't help you do it, because there is no such section. There is, I think I know pretty well the exceptions to the open meeting law that allow executive session. And I don't think the formation of a subcommittee comes, is, is, will be covered under any part of Mass, Mass General Laws. And the only reason to have an executive session are the reasons that are enumerated in Mass General Law, and this isn't one of them.
But to hire MASC or to have them?
Now, the school committee can do that.
Okay.
On the forming of the ad hoc committee?
Yep.
Can we make an amendment with duties to be assigned, discussed at a later date?
Yeah, we need to form the committee first and then take that vote after that.
And, and can I?
We already did.
Yep.
Well, no, no.
No, we.
No, are you going to just ask for volunteers for the committee? Is that how we're gonna do it?
We need to discuss it, so let's get, discuss it.
Okay, yeah.
So I need a motion to form the ad hoc?
Motion to form an ad hoc committee for the purposes of selecting both an interim and a permanent superintendent.
Second.
Anybody have any more thoughts?
How many people should be on?
I should, so, with the vote to form this committee, does that mean that MASC is not going to be doing this?
No, that's up to the committee to decide on someone.
I think that vote should be put towards the full committee deciding about MASC instead of just the ad hoc.
Well, we can do that too.
I'd like to modify, amend the motion that, after forming that, I mean, that the whole.
Why don't, why don't we first make a motion to approve, to approve the actions taken so far by the chair. And, I don't know, in relation to bringing MASC in to, it would take care of the fact it didn't go through any committee. So we're endorsing the actions of the chair in bringing in MASC to assist with the interim superintendent selection process. That would cover what's happened. So, my motion is that we endorse the actions taken to this date by the chair of the SBRSD School Committee to move along the process of selecting an interim superintendent.
Carl?
But you need a second.
We need to have a second.
You need a second before we start debating it.
No, we do more, need more than a second. There is a pending motion that has been seconded, that has been discussed and has not been voted on. And either Bonnie withdraws that motion.
I'll withdraw that motion and put my substitute motion is that the SBRSD School, SBRS.
Who seconded?
I seconded.
Oh.
I guess I withdraw my second.
All right, my motion is that we endorse the actions taken by the chair of the SBRSD School Committee to date with the engagement of MASC services to assist us in selecting an interim superintendent.
I second.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Any discussion? Bonnie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Arthur, yes. And Nancy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the motion is to establish a, an ad hoc subcommittee to guide the SBRSD School Committee in the selection process of an interim and a permanent superintendent. Second, or did I? Okay.
Can I amend?
Did I leave anything out of that?
The only thing I would add, if I can amend, with assistance by MSC.
M.A.
C, whatever.
Whatever is calling.
All those initials.
Well, that's two different things endorsing.
Well, I.
I keep them clean.
We're gonna work on this, then we're gonna work on getting a full-time superintendent.
Yes.
That's not what that motion.
That is not what that motion is.
The motion says, yeah, I think that, I think it's a priority, you know, it's a huge.
Well, do you want to go through two ad hoc committees? Probably not.
No.
All right, so.
One ad hoc committee.
So, do you want me to make the motion that it's first a motion to establish an ad hoc committee for the selection of an interim superintendent with the assistance of MASC? So that would cover everything.
I second that, but Carl's gonna say something here for you.
Yeah, no, 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 no. There were, no, no, I'm, 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 I'm mostly okay with it.
Okay.
Okay enough to vote yes when I'm voting no.
I second.
Yes. I'll.
Discussion? Bonnie?
Yes.
Yes. Kim?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Julie? Nancy? And Arthur, yes.
Okay, so we don't even have to do anything else?
Not at the moment.
At the moment?
No.
But apparently that could be Carl's.
Because after three people kill each other in the process of the first phase, you might switch to.
Somebody might want to.
Switch it up. Right, exactly.
That's fine, yeah. Let, let's address the.
I have a question. I have a question for Orin. Based on Liz's suggestion, do you think, we can have the rest of the people weigh in on this, but do you think we should have a meeting on this sole issue next week? That, I think that's what she suggested. I, I may have heard her wrong, but I think that's what she suggested, that we move.
She did call it right, because she wanted us.
Yeah, we need to vote if I'm.
Okay, so, do, do we want to poll the members on when they're available next week? If at all, the fourth, the fourth is presumably a date that's out, which is, the fourth is next Friday?
You can come in first.
I have to pick a committee.
Oh, and you're gonna do that?
Yes.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, are you looking for the full committee? Or just the subcommittee to meet next week?
No, the subcommittee.
The subcommittee.
The subcommittee, okay.
I think you may need to have, because what the subcommittee comes up with might engender the need for a vote. And then you'd be into the middle of July before you.
You'd always do it back to back, like one week earlier. It's really not gonna take that long to set down the norms, rules, whatever. And then go right into a special school committee meeting.
Right.
Yeah, I think that would save you, right.
A question for you, are, are you planning on doing this within the next couple of days? Tonight? Because one of the things I think you could do is simply ask if any of the six of us here tonight are willing to volunteer for that.
I just think that on any committee, we should have one representative from each town. So every town has a voice, whether it's interim or superintendent, because there's been so much toxisness in our area lately.
I, I don't, oh, finish.
And that is just a suggestion. And that way, everybody, you know, is represented. Halford, Monterey, Ymarborough, Egremont, Sheffield.
All right, I have a question.
Yeah.
I think automatically, what are we saying? Is it Art plus another person in Sheffield? Or as Art, as the chair, is separate and you have somebody else?
That would, that might make sense.
Sheffield represent, Sheffield? I mean, he is the chair, but he's still Sheffield.
Yeah.
I don't, and it's, you know, too many people, too many opinions. It's like, we're gonna have a streamlined.
So what if we express our interest and then Art's gonna make the appointment?
Yeah, you could just.
And that's it. So I'll express interest, but you might express interest, and that's okay. So whatever you choose is fine.
And I'm not expressing any interest.
Jim?
I'm not expressing interest, but I'm the only one from Egremont.
Well, that's up to you. You don't.
You don't have to, I mean, you know, but we can open it, but if you don't have to.
You don't have to, but in order for your town to get set.
That's not true. We, I'm, they are have to, we are elected for an entire district. That's been rammed into our beings from ever.
And sitting on this for six years, or four years, or how long ever I've been sitting on this, I see the difference in how the towns are represented by their representatives. And I just say, it's like, I watched the local stuff going on in the last few months, and I just believe that everybody should be represented. So there's no, well, miscommunication, miss anything.
But if somebody doesn't want to do it, then they don't want to do it.
They don't want to do it, they're towns.
Seth, can I speak for myself?
Yep.
Well, I wasn't speaking for you.
All right. Remember, there were two of us, and the reason there aren't two of us is because Kyle's family, the precedence. If Kyle was here, I would split it with him, okay?
But Kyle's not here.
But Kyle's not here. If we're gonna do a town, if we're gonna do it town by town, then I have to be on it, I guess.
No.
So I will.
No, that's still up to you. You make that decision yourself.
I just did.
Okay.
Also.
So you agreed to it?
I agreed to it.
I mean, the interim is gonna be a short term, and then you can always decide.
You don't want to.
Do it for the superintendent, you can see how it goes. And maybe they'll have another chair.
Right, and maybe there'll be someone from Egremont by the time we do that, that's true.
We have a year to.
I think they were reaching out to Dan, Daniel.
Yeah, so you might get a reprieve.
Okay, so Julie, Jim, Bonnie's a no. Nancy's a yes.
Yeah, and then Miguel's the only one we are not sure of, right? He's the only one not here tonight.
I think Miguel probably would, I mean, I, I, I am speaking for him, but knowing where things are at from Miguel, my guess is that he would prefer not to be part of the ad hoc, I would prefer to be part of the school committee.
Carl?
Carl?
Yeah.
Jim? And myself, so that's five.
That's six.
That would be six.
No.
Six expressed interest, he said.
Oh, six expressed interest.
So I'm putting my name in the hat, so that means that Julie's out. So it's five, one for each town.
Okay, so that you've gotten this far.
Yeah.
If you could pick the date.
Yeah.
Right now.
Yep, everybody get your calendars out.
The other discussion after that is about the updating of the brochure.
I think that's the ad hoc job, right?
I would think it's the ad hoc's job.
She said that we could also have the chair updated with input. She said that's.
This is for the.
But we need to get, I need, we need to get the one that Beth asked.
Interim search.
Right, the sixteen.
The sixteen.
Ad hoc interim search.
Who, what dates, what times work for people?
I'm pretty flexible, except for the fourth.
I'm pretty flexible too.
Well, we're not gonna do it on the fourth, so that's a given. Jim, what day, what, where?
Well, you're at thirty, so you can't post.
I need a date, I'll tell you, I don't know.
You'd have to do Monday or Tuesday.
About seeing my calendar.
Tuesday's the earliest.
Tuesday.
Actually. When that's gone and Michelle's not back until Monday, so.
Is there any way to get a copy of the brochure and send it out to the five people on the ad hoc so that they can review it, so they know what are we talking about?
Art, did you put, do you have a date?
No, that's, we're trying to figure this out, it has to be posted and then.
But, so Tuesday would be the earliest.
Did you say there was a problem getting it out for Tuesday?
Well, there's no one to post it.
Oh, that's all?
But I don't know.
Is it just gonna be posted website?
Yeah, I mean, well, we'd have to do.
The town is the whole thing.
I mean, do, I don't know. I, I don't think it's crazy hard, we could probably figure it out between the two of us. But I don't have Michelle until Monday.
Okay, so can you guys all meet on Wednesday then?
I would say Wednesday at the earliest.
That way you're safe.
Next Wednesday?
Yeah, the second.
Wednesday the second?
Wednesday the second.
It's okay with me.
It's fine on me.
What time?
I'm open.
What time?
You have an, on time?
What time?
What time? Morning, afternoon?
Three AM.
Are you backing it with the school committee meeting?
Yeah, that's what I said.
That's the only thing we have to do. We have to back to back that with the school committee meeting. So are you available on second?
What time?
Bonnie, are you available on second?
Um, it depends on the time.
Yeah, I have another meeting at six, but I could do it at five.
For school committee?
I mean, I'm assuming it would be voting to endorse whatever we're doing.
We are.
So if this.
Am I correct that we're, we're just having a meeting of this ad hoc committee? We're not, we're not talking about a meeting of the full school committee?
No, that would be follow, we have to.
Oh, okay.
We have to follow.
Because we have to agree to hire MASC.
Right, okay, yeah.
I hate those missions.
Time, time, time doesn't matter to me, I'm, I'm.
So if we did it at four?
Or do it in the afternoon, whatever you want.
Have enough time. I, I don't think an hour is gonna be enough time to go over that whole brochure and make sure you're okay, but.
Yeah, I don't think it is, I don't think an hour's enough either, I agree.
Let's just, but, Kim, do you have time to commit up?
Yeah, I just have to tell my boss that I can't work.
So where are we gonna go, three?
About that, nope.
Are we gonna go at three?
I think, I think two hours.
Three, three, three for the ad hoc, and five for the school committee meeting.
Hold, hold on. Hold, hold on, same day?
Same day.
Then they can post on, they can go live.
And then, uh.
Are you good with that, Nancy?
I'm good.
Okay.
Just have to come in on, I don't, I don't know that I'll be drive-through yet, I'm, I'm restricted not to go on these calls until.
Do you think we can record this at the whole, the sixteen? So like, in case Nancy can't make it, she can be on Zoom.
I'll.
Well, either way, you'll have the twelve, and you can update it on the twelve, if you can't pass sixteen.
So would anybody object if I moved to a turn?
No.
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Arthur, yes. Meeting's adjourned.
Beth?